Really good. All right, I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is June 27, 2023, and the time is 7:06 PM. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that people can participate by joining us here in Town Hall or on the Zoom link which was provided on the online agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Since we have members that are joining us online, I'm going to take roll call for those that are here and present and for members. Myself, my name is Chris Arsenal. I'm here. Can we do roll call, please? So Bill Crenshaw? Here, Annette.
Garavina here.
Jim Holwan here, and online Natalie, can you hear us?
He's still trying to connect.
I can't.
Thank you, Natalie. And do you feel you can participate online tonight?
Um, is is our alternate present because my connection is not great?
Um, we guess we can we can talk to Jeff. Jeff, hi, thanks for joining.
Hey, sorry I couldn't be there in person.
All good, no problem. Can you can you hear us and are you able to participate online?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Great, thank you. If there's a connection for you or Natalie, please, please speak up and let me know.
Yep.
And so let's go to item two, the approval not required, NR for 27 Elmwood Street. Bill is is the applicant from 21 Elmwood Street here with us tonight. Is Mr. Palazzo online? I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right, Palazzo. Is is there anyone online representing the applicant for 27 Elmwood Street? For the approval not required? Okay, we will table this item. And go to item three for the public hearing for one tiger drive before I reopen that. Look, can we check to see if there's members from from that applicant here? Yeah, um, let's see. I don't see Stu.
You have Bobby Bowman here from Select Energy.
Bobby, thank you. Sorry, I don't. Did we meet?
We did. Yes, I was on the sidewalk a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Bobby. Sorry about that. Thanks for thanks for joining us tonight. So I will reopen the public hearing for one tiger drive. And this is a special permit modification filed by Green Seal Environmental, and Bobby Bowman is here representing the applicant. We, I'll give a little primer on this. A couple of weeks ago, Bill and I, Bill Nemser and I, met on site at at the high school to discuss this project and to give some feedback that was provided during the previous planning board hearing. And my understanding, Bobby, is that your team made some changes based on the previous hearing and that sidewalk. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Are you available to present the the most recent set of drawings to us?
Yes, I can share my screen if that's helpful for everyone.
That'd be great. Thank you, Bobby. You should be able to do it now, Bobby.
Okay. All right, are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, based on our sidewalk several weeks ago, we made some changes to the previously submitted set of drawings, and this was sent out to the planning board last week. It was also included in the agenda. The main changes were addressing some of the items brought up at the meeting. So one, we received confirmation that the storm water system will receive no additional input based on this project. So water previously flowing to impervious areas remains the same, and water flowing to pervious areas remains the same. So no changes there to water flow on the site based on this structure. This is just an overview of the proposed location for the canopy. Several other changes included confirmation of new ADA walkway that was added to the far western column. We had a conflict with one column inside that ADA walkway. So we're showing how we reroute the maintaining the existing truncated domes and install a new concrete and asphalt walkway to maintain the accessible pathway. So that has been added to the drawings. There's also a note added based on a comment to remove and save the three existing light poles that will be removed. So the note now says that those three light poles will be removed as part of the project and set aside for the city's use as they see fit. And then also added to the list were confirmation that any of the parking signs, existing parking signs that were maybe temporarily removed during the construction, those will be replaced in kind either on the structure itself or the new pole will be set to maintain all the existing parking signage as is currently on the parking lot. So those are the main items added to the drawings based on our sidewalk last week, but I'm also available. Any other questions you may have regarding this set of drawings?
Thanks, Bobby. And we confirmed that there is no Conservation Commission input on this because there's no changes to the stormwater design or any of the criteria, correct?
Yeah.
They're out of jurisdiction. Sorry, Bobby, I was talking to a conservation agent. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so they're out of the jurisdiction. Bill, is there anything you want to add to this?
No, I just say there's also public support, Public Works created their support for this, that they've been over it and their support configuration.
And to remind the board, this was, we determined that this, these changes, these modifications required a, as a major, major modification change, which required us to open the public hearing. And that's what we're doing today. So our job is to evaluate the changes, determine that we still lose the site. Any questions at this point from the board? Any associated special permit, any associated special permit, okay?
I have a question. Is there something that shows that the proposed lighting is equivalent to the old lighting? Or better, probably better, but is there something that shows that?
So what we did is we included a photometric plan in the original submission. We based on guidelines that recommend parking lots to be a minimum of point two foot candles. We designed to a minimum of point three, but an average of 1.2 foot candles across the entire area underneath the canopy. So it was not based on the existing light, but more based on recommendations for parking lots in general. If there's specific values that you could share for the existing site, we'd be happy to include that in there, but we designed it based on recommendations for parking lots in general.
And Bobby, can you just zoom in and show us the light poles you're removing and then where the lights are being added under the solo canopy?
Sure. So there's three light poles here, one here.
Wait, hold on. I messed up. I won't catch it again. Yeah, I know, right? There you go.
Okay, go ahead, Bobby.
All right, so I cladded the three light poles that will be removed. These are underneath the existing canopy, so they'll conflict with the future canopy. So these three will be removed, and then our proposal is to add 24 new fixtures underneath the array. So this is the site layout, basically spread one between each canopy across the entire length. So we'll basically 24 fixtures replacing the three existing is the current proposal.
And those dots, are those lumens or are those just dots?
So the it's it's very small, but those are the the foot candle at each location. So the red, the red is the new fixture, the blue is the column, and each dot represents the the expected foot candle, lighting foot candle at every, you know, this particular grid spot.
Overall, do the lumens under the canopy, do they increase, decrease, or stay about the same, the foot candle numbers under the canopy?
So the recommendation is a ratio of 20 to one maximum for the maximum foot candles to minimum foot candles. So we have across the underneath the canopy, it's a ratio of 13 to one. So it's a a maximum foot candle of 3.9 and a minimum foot candle value of 0.3. So it's a 13 min to max ratio. This is sort of a visualization of what we expect it to look like underneath.
And what I'm asking about is, is there a substantial difference between the lighting that's being provided under the canopy compared to the current lighting scheme that is currently operating?
Oh, sorry about that. So I I don't have values for the current foot candles on site, so I guess I couldn't speak to that as far as how that matches to the existing onsite.
Bill, we probably didn't have a lighting plan as the original site plan?
Yeah, there was one. There was a, there was a photometric.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, it's that was in the original package, right?
That's correct. Yeah, this this lighting submitted package was in the original to the city.
No, I meant, I meant the site plan, the original site plan that was approved back in, say, 2008.
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't look. I didn't.
You didn't find anything, right?
No, I just found the permit.
Okay, right. Bobby, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not substantially changing the lighting scheme that's occurring. That's all.
Understood, understood. I would add that luckily light fixtures are easy to add and remove in the future. I would say if you do find that it doesn't meet your requirements, light fixtures are something that's easier to add in the future.
And I know you're providing feedback. Sorry, I jumped in. Do you have anything else?
My other question was, I kind of wondered why we're lighting the hillside and the parking side. We need lights on both sides.
It's not required. So if the preference is to not have lights on that side, we can definitely remove those or relocate them to the parking lot side. That's definitely possible.
I don't have a good thought of that, but I think you're going to. Yeah, it's not paying a lot of energy, but it's counter solar to waste energy like that.
Maybe, maybe, maybe reduce them a half. I don't know, but until I see it, it's going to be hard to really judge it.
What we'll typically do too is we'll put each row on a separate circuit. So at the end of the day, they can control each side individually. You can turn off one side, turn on both, however you see fit.
That that could help practically. I think, and I think the larger point is that, you know, our regs and general best practices are the lights areas that require light, lighting, of course, and not light areas that don't require it. I mean, any other comments from the board? Jim, no, Annette?
No, not anything.
Natalie, if you're able to participate, do you have any comments or feedback?
Hello, this is me now. I do not have any comments.
Jeff, any, any thoughts, feedback?
Yeah, can I just ask which way are the, would the panels shed the water, like towards the grass or would it be back onto the pavement?
So in general, it'll largely flow as it does now. There's a gap, a half inch gap between all the solar panels. So as water falls on top of each panel, it'll just drip down in between essentially as it did before. So.
Gotcha. No, I think it all makes sense to me.
And Bobby, can you just cover again the 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 new sidewalk panels you're putting in on the, I guess, the left side, top left side of this map?
Sure. So the light gray here is the existing setup. So we have the two ADA parking stalls here. There's the truncated domes that go to an existing concrete landing area, and then it goes into an asphalt sidewalk around the field. So because we have a column here, we're extending a new concrete sidewalk past that column to make a continuous pathway and then connecting that new concrete sidewalk back to the existing asphalt sidewalk. The truncated domes will will stay in place.
And that sidewalk is, you said that sidewalk is currently asphalt as of now, right?
That's correct. Yeah, the landing area, I believe, is concrete, and then it transitions to asphalt.
Overall, the projects, we we're, we are not losing parking spaces, correct?
That's correct. That'll stay as is.
And as I believe as you talked on site, and as I believe what's shown on the figures here is that the parking signs will be replaced at the end of construction, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. So this, for instance, this one here would be affected during construction as we dig our foundation. So what we would do is we mark all the locations ahead of time and then reinstall a new pole here after construction is completed. If it happens that a, you know, for instance, this column is roughly near an existing stall. In lieu of a new pole, we could just attach the existing parking sign to our new column itself. But one way or the other, the existing parking signage will remain as is, marking each existing parking stall.
I know that there is a handful of trees that are going to need to be removed. What what is your, what is the construction timeline here? When when do you expect or anticipate construction to approximately begin?
I think the goal as we get through this process and then the permitting process would be to start sometime in the fall with the goal to then finish up roughly around beginning of the new year.
Great. I would, I don't, it's not going to be part of this decision because I think what you have shown is that the tree warden will make a determination on what to do with the trees, but I I would appreciate if we could put some effort to figure out if those trees can be reused on site. I'm, I will also reach out to the other stakeholders and provide the same feedback. I'd like to see these trees reused on site someplace else if possible. So I think would be good to get that evaluation started, as you know, because we only have certain opportunities for tree planting and tree moving seasons. You can't do it in August, of course.
Understood, absolutely.
Anything else to add?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Oh, I'll open up for public comments. Are there any? Let's start online. Is there any public comments online? And if there are, please raise your hand and we will call on you individually. I believe Lee Eiler, please. Can you unmute?
Yeah, Brian. Can you hear me now?
Hi, Lee. Thanks for joining us.
Hello. Hello.
Sorry, hold on. I'm calling on Lee only at this time. Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good. Yes, I'm Lee Eiler. I'm on the Maynard Tree Committee, and I've been chair of the committee for the last two and a half years. I'm, I am glad to hear that Chris has raised the question about the trees, and I do understand that the tree warden will be making the decision. We work with the tree warden, and I think just as you're making the effort to save the lighting poles and the traffic signage, it would be wonderful if we could also do something about the trees. Now, I looked at them just a couple of days ago, and they're not in the greatest shape. They're certainly viable at this point. I think it's very expensive to try to relocate trees with deep roots, and I would be in favor of planting new trees somewhere on the school grounds. The tree committee last year for Arbor Day gratis planted three red bud trees right to the left of the front of the school, which have been very successful, and have had a lot of appreciative comments about them. So I just urge you to keep a focus on the trees as part of your project. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments online? If you could, please raise your hand or come off mute and please speak. You need to maybe unmute Jerry because Jerry was trying to speak earlier.
I did ask them, and they have to unmute themselves.
Jerry, I knew you were trying to make a comment earlier. You're welcome to speak.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Jerry, are you there?
Oh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? I am here.
Yes, we can hear you.
Did you have a public comment to make on this project?
Oh, I don't. No, no. I'm here for 27 Elmwood.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll get to when we open that up. Any public comments here? Are you sure? All right, I will make a motion. So sorry, yes, I'll make a motion to close this hearing. Are you good? All in favor to close the hearing, I will do roll call. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie, sorry. And that's Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, so that's five zero to close the hearing. I've been, I'm in favor of approving the site modification and the special permit. Anyone object to that? The motion, I didn't make a motion. I was doing discussion. I I think we can add it as a condition that the same number of trees be added since that was consistent with the initial site plan? Does that make sense? We think so.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I will see if I can make a motion. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the site plan and also find that that the modifications are in accordance with the special permit with its date in February, February 22, 2011. And I also define that the site plan and the modifications are consistent with section 10 of the zoning bylaws as presented during this hearing. I'll also add that we will make a condition that the number of trees that are removed from this project also need to be added someplace within the vicinity of the Maynard High School campus itself. So not the overall campus, but someplace within the high school sort of boundaries of the campus. Do you have a second?
You have a second?
Thank you. All in favor will do roll call. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And that's
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Natalie?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, that's five zero for approval. Site plan modification and the special permit, I added a condition that the you're in that, okay.
Because she wanted to be up on, okay. All right, I'm on.
Good. We were able to find representative for the
You can actually dial in, I think, with your phone. There's a
Can you mute? Bobby, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it, and I look forward to doing the project.
Thank you, Bobby. Okay, I think we can get through 27 Elmwood Street pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I'm going to unmute her. Okay, I will. Let's, let's open up, but this isn't a hearing, is it?
No, it's the NR, making sure that they
Hi, good evening, Jerry. My name's Chris. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening.
Would you, would you mind for the record, just providing your name and address and then introducing yourself?
Yes, my pardon me, you, I'm sorry, I have the people in the background, the sellers. My name is Jerry Wilcox. I'm representing the sellers with Barrett-Sutherland International Real Day.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, I think there's just a little bit of delay. Do you want to share?
Yes. Julia, can you share your screen and then give us a primer on what the request is?
So this, this is Bill. So I'm going to I don't worry about that. But I will gladly pull up that plan. So Jerry, do you want to talk about this, or would you like Bill to go over it? Yes, Bill will be going.
Okay. Okay. The, what we're doing here is the approval not required for this property. And there's I think we have gone over the three criteria. So the purpose of this is it's not a decision, it's to find, it's more an acknowledgement that the property meets the standards for approval not required a subdivision of the land. What the the key issues here are access to a reported way, which in this case we have on Elmwood. That we're not going to create non-conforming, non-conforming bond for the district. And in this case, this is, I apologize, I tried to print this out before and I didn't, we had a computer jam there. But the we find this
Okay, all right.
Jerry, can you hear us at this point?
I'm not sure.
All right, what I would suggest is this, the board has heard this, I can get some more information and probably I can clear this up before the end of the last hearing. Okay, I just said we were just printing it out when it happened, we jammed up. I agree. No, I wouldn't prefer it to launch. Yeah, this is, this is
Or keep it calling.
Oh, that's, you might work it out with our Okay, Jerry, is there a number I can call you if I can attend tonight? And I'll, I'll try and call you. We're going to get on to, we have another petition.
Oh, sure, sure. 617 803 3441.
Okay, try to hang on here, and after the hearing, I'll try to have all the information.
What does it need?
Yeah, you can just go ahead, and if you can, you can stay online with us.
Are you talking?
Bill, why don't you go?
Are you talking to me?
Let's move on. Yeah, I'll call her, I'll call her again. Yeah, Jerry, Bill Nemser is going to give you a call on that cell phone number.
He's going to call me?
Yes, yes, thank you. And we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you later this evening about this.
Okay, terrific, thanks.
Thanks. You talked about having to come in, maybe we should talk more.
Yeah, it's nice.
So, yeah, that was, yeah, that, yeah. And so
Let's
You want to, you said you already put them up here?
Okay, so let's open up the public Okay, so let's open up the public hearing for one fifteen Main Street. Uh, this is a special permit modification um, from the applicant. And tonight, we have the applicant hearing person, which is great. Thank you, Mr. McDonald and Jackie for coming in, um, can we just start very quickly, just by introducing yourself and your team? And then I'm gonna ask Bill and um Julia just to give a little primer, and then we'll turn it over to your team for presentation, is that okay?
James McDonald, McDonald Development. My daughter Jackie. Donald Development, sir, husband Junior. Um, development, Mike Scott's our engineer.
And Mike Scott, what, Birmingham?
Atlanta Design Collaborative.
Where? Thank you. Thank you. Um, and to go back in time, this the special permit was approved a few years ago, now we're just looking at modification that the applicant submitted. Um, and I wish Bill was here, they wanted to give a primer. But you know what, we'll just turn it over to Mike, and Mike, you can walk us through uh, the modifications that you're presenting.
Sure, um, for the record, Mike Scott, Land Design Collaborative, I feel a little off with my back to you.
You're, you're welcome to sit there too, if you want, if that's easier. Whatever you wanna do.
Okay, so um to back up, I think, as you know project was approved a few years ago. Um, I was contracted by the uh, McDonald's to assist them in getting through conservation process, a notice of intent was um I guess it had some deficiencies, we, we sorted through that last fall, sometime around October, November, that was approved. Subsequent to that, we um worked with the D P W to allow stormwater permits to be issued, to allow the parking system to be connected. And then more recently, we worked with the D P W regarding the sewer um, connection within the street. At that point, uh, Mr. McDonald had all the necessary approvals other than the building permit, and he approached us to um, as he had excavated the foundation and created the hole uh, to redesign the site plan to allow parking under the building, so that's what we're we're here to discuss. And since I wasn't part of the original process, I don't know how many of the members recall or went through, sort of understand what the project is, do I need to go back that far or just tell you what's?
I, I think the best thing to do is focus on the change, okay, because that's what we're going through, you're looking at.
Okay, so the, so the building, the retail space in the front, the units above, the parking, remain the same. The, the, the matter here is that um, originally, there was some parking under the building and some parking adjacent to the building. Um, and the promenade walkway, it's just up along the river. And in order to circulate through those two parking lots, um, traffic would enter the building. And so what you're looking at in this uh, image is the reconfiguration of pavement and um, parking is shown in red, the original um, layout is shown in screen gray, so I will try to um, better explain um, as I go, so originally one would enter the, the prop property, the project site through the municipal parking lot, so on the screen, this is the river. Proposed building is actually here, this is the C V S parking lot. One would enter from the municipal parking lot into the building, following the gray arrow circulated around through the exterior surface parking, re-enter the building and then leave the building. It would, would have been parking outside and parking under the dwelling unit, so at ground grade, essentially the same elevation as the parking lot in the walkway. Um, and there were thirty parking spaces on site. A few parking spaces were uh, to be lost for the creation of the driveway within the town's parking lot, those were to be relocated towards the river, so there would be a balance of parking in that regard. This would have all been at the same elevation. Um, essentially, the elevation of the river, walkway with a slight grade up to the building, so a little higher at the building, a little lower than the C V S parking lot. If you've been to the site more recently, you see the foundation and you see the elevation of the hole that's there, and I haven't been there in a few weeks, but I presume it's the same. So what the new proposal is, is to allow using the same entrance point, allow the vehicles to drop down in grade to enter more or less where that ground is today, a little higher than that, obviously, but not significantly. Um but because there will be a hole there cars being below grade, they can no longer exit the building onto the surface parking. This, this will affect the basement garage, um, so one way in, one way out. In order to access the at-grade parking, which is necessary to retain that thirty parking spaces on site, a second driveway is required. So where before there was an uninterrupted row of parking at grade on, in the municipal parking lot some spaces would be lost. Um, and we've shifted these over a little farther to retain the two spaces here, but a couple more spaces will be lost. And folks would enter and then exit through this driveway if they were parking in the exterior lot, so there's no communication between the building, parking and the um exterior parking. And what that, what that does is it allows the height of the building to come down, obviously, because the parking, instead of being at street grade, is now below street grade. Um, and it allows Mr. McDonald not to have to fill that hole in with a significant amount of material, and he has aesthetic considerations, prefers the lower building, this is what they've done with their other buildings in town. From a, so from a vehicular and pedestrian circulation standpoint folks that were gonna enter the garage before and then use the stair or elevator will still do that to get to their units above. Um, folks that would be parking exterior to either use the retail space that's in the front of the building or to access their units. They can still access the building at grade here or walk around to the front of the building. And then they would enter and either take stairs or an elevator to their units, but it wouldn't be a full, a, a full um, floor, it would only be a, it'd be a split condition, if you will. Relative to uh, landscaping side amenities, whatnot, there's a nominal increase in grass or open-faced lawn areas as a result of this. Um, we discussed this with the Conservation Commission last week. And nothing would change in this gray section, which would is to be um, deadened in the town as a municipal walkway. So heading away from the walkway, there would be a nominal change of grade roughly halfway through the parking lot, because this is in a flood zone, so what we did was we maintained the grade of the original approval and then slowly raised the grade once we got beyond the flood zone towards the building. Um you would have, so in essence, you had a little, little more green space, effectively the same drainage patterns with the obvious difference being that instead of this being at grade, it would actually be sloped down towards the basement garage, um, as Mr. McDonald has done, as his other facilities, other buildings. This would be a heated driveway, and there would be two drainage collection systems, one roughly midway um, down and then one at the bottom. And, and this one would discharge by gravity to the drainage system, which is actually on the next slide, and this slide gets quite busy, but I'll show it for what it is. There would be drainage system that would go by gravity to the approved infiltration system, so everything you see that's in gray essentially from the building line towards the river, was approved by the Conservation Commission. Nothing changes from the building towards the river. Um, except that there was a catch basin roughly in this area here that moved over a few feet. Um, and all the other drainage is still fed to this system, both from the walkway and the driveway, the parking areas as it was previously, with the exception of the lower portion of the driveway, that, that would then need to be pumped up to um, that drainage system. One of the questions that came up at the Conservation Commission was, what do we do with snow, and that I mentioned, this would be a heated driveway, so it would be a need for plowing. Plowing on the surface would be as it was originally on the vision. The landscape and other improvements, benches and whatnot along the promenade, there would be no change, the barrier that was previously approved and required would be extended to full length. Um and that's shown in the landscape plan, uh, which I have as well. So, and then internally, same front entrance to the building, same exit out at grade this location, so the retail, if you were coming in from the street or the parking lot, there, there's really no change. It, it boils down to a shorter building or a, a lower building, um, because some of it will be um, in the ground. And again, that saves both in the fill that's necessary to construction timeline, there are construction-related details that are significant benefit um, to the McDonald's in terms of time and cost, not to mention a long-term um, asset that they would have, which they believe would be far more attractive um, to the, to the town and, and the folks walking along the uh promenade, because you wouldn't be looking into a garage, you would be looking more or less at the, at the the residential component above. Um, so that, that's essentially what's we're talking about is, again, instead of driving in and circulating through and back out, there'd be two separate means of access and the great uh, exit to these two separate parking lots. And other than that, a nominal increase in um, open space, so more opportunity for landscaping, I'll, I'll be moved around, um, little loss of parking in the town's parking lot. Um, but no net loss on the McDonald's property. And we have, um, I have all the plans that were provided, if you want me to go sheet by sheet, if you need more detail, or just, I'm happy to answer a question.
So, we could do it two ways, we, you could continue, or we could start covering up this conversation into parking, circulation, and then have a conversation about landscaping and that, like, maybe that's probably a better way to handle it.
Um, I could use some guidance on what we have to be approving. I mean, because the parkage change, but the buildings change, and there's probably different relief, relief being requested, variances, so.
Yeah, that's why I wanted.
What's the whole menu of stuff that we'll have to be looking at and and a free.
Yes, we'll, we'll get back, because he has, I think, a good handle on that.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, let's let's get that answered. Um, and then, so before going further, in the meantime, um, where, where, where is this at with Conservation Commission? Can you give us a general update and all that for things, because I want I want our work to, to be helpful with the whole sort of picture.
Yeah, and there's some jurisdictional overlap and some things that get separated out, so, um, basically, the, the process for uh conservation modification is uh, run by the state and it's very convoluted, they believe, so uh, they, the McDonald's came to our last meeting uh, last week and were able to request requesting a modification, so we had to approve that they could request a modification and that they didn't need a brand new permit. So now, um, what will happen is on July eighth, they open up their, their public hearing with button notifications, legal ads, all of that stuff, and they will present formally at a public hearing these modifications. Um, the drainage is under conservation jurisdiction, um, so uh, based on stormwater management, since conservation is covering it, you don't have to cover it. Um, and uh we, in conservation, see um, covering all of that within the next meeting, um, and, and approving, proving this, this modification, there were no major concerns. Um, particularly because I've been working with the engineer um, on these modifications to ensure that, that we all uh, agreed, and uh, there's no concern moving forward. Um, as for the landscape plan, that line, um is, is kind of falls within both jurisdictions, so uh, you know, you see the new landscape plan, I think planning has more concerns probably about like aesthetics than conservation, we're more pervious versus impervious, we see more pervious surface, so thumbs up from us.
And you're referencing that we have design standards, like state regs, and is that what you're saying?
Exactly, yeah, so like landscape regulations that you guys can, can have more say if you'd like, and well, how we're looking at this, though, is from the the wall down to the river, um, is riverbank, so what I would request from you is to allow conservation to, to have their focus more on restoration of the riverbank. Um, and, and not worry too much about aesthetics on that side, just because we're gonna really focus on plants that can, you know get, get in there, fast rooting and, and stabilize the side.
Well, anything that's done outside the wall on the riverbank, I don't consider part of landscape regulations.
Okay.
Because landscape regulations are about islands, plantings, um, trees, things that are publicly accessible, and things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
To me, that, I agree that, and to me, that's a different animal. Um, I don't wanna talk about that.
And so the, the biggest change that you'll see um, in, when we had this conversation in conservation last week, is the trees um, along the wall, so uh, it says in some of the plans um, that will maintain the existing trees, what we figured out, uh, while Jimmy was trying to start to build the wall, and is that
Things are difficult, yeah.
You shouldn't build a wall and talk tree roots, because the tree will die and it will fall, so, and, so those one will not be, those will all be taken down, and that's why we're really focusing on restoration.
Um, thank you. Um, Bill, Bill Numzer, um, can you give us an overview of what our roles and responsibilities are for this, for this review?
Sure.
What, what, like frame it out for us, what's our lane, what are we looking at to, what do, what do we need to look at? What's part of our purview? Did I get that right?
Well, I thought we tried to figure out what documentation needs to be provided and specific requests and things. I think, I think it's probably more detailed than this. A change. Land of plan change.
The um, the project, as you recall, was, is, is approved under downtown overlay district uh, with a um, host community agreement that has been executed, um, everything remains in from this change, uh, is unaffected, so that would be the first uh, part of the regulatory framework. Um, special permit also um would be unaffected insofar as the um number of units, et cetera. What would be affected from this, this particular change, though, would be the site plan that's associated with a special permit, we have to be amended. Um, the project has already been through design review. Um, because of the addition, the underground garage, I um, believe that, you know is sufficient that there's, there's not going to be any aesthetic changes from the uh, design review.
That's the lowering of the building require us to.
The, well, the lowering of the the building is dropping by what, uh, the five feet, I believe, I, I don't, if I mean in my opinion, no.
Well, is it a box we have to check, or, I mean, you're already saying, you think it's no big deal, or you're saying it's not something that we have to address.
I'm saying that the height of the building, uh, dropping five feet, or what, what is the total?
Approximately, approximately five feet. You're right, that's approximately five feet.
I would say it's de minimis, and that the spirit and the essence of the design review would remain intact. And, and I, I believe it is, the, the chair and in conjunction with the board can choose design review if it feels necessary, but it's not required. No, design view is required. But we already had design review. Right, right, design, that, that's not optional, what is optional? Required to reopen design review? Oh, my, my opinion, no. Isn't that now we're required to do it, meaning we're not required to do it? No. Okay. There, there is a standing special permit that is in effect at this point that you're amended, or we react amended, site plan is. Okay, so we have site plan review, there's clearly traffic pattern changes that we need to look at, so we need to look at traffic and flow. Um, some of that, I, I mean, we haven't covered it all yet, but we've already seen some of the design drawings that are here. Um we talked about that stormwater doesn't you know, I'd like to talk through what this, what the actual stormwater changes are, so that they're on record and we can hear them. But it sounds like they seem also de minimis in that they're being covered by the Conservation Commission. Landscape is part of our purview? Yes, as this? Yes, and that, that did change, um, this had a um the board has, if you recall, when we did the original landscape plan, um I believe we called it, uh, the bylaws called it an alternative landscape plan, but it was acceptable, but there were changes that now that I would recommend to the board. You know? Um, review. Okay. And so the, the, the sort of deliverable here is an updated site plan package. Right, that's, that's, that's the deliverable here now, that we're looking towards. Correct. Correct.
And it updated, what is it?
Ended up.
Modifying the.
Um, there, and I But from the applicant's standpoint, what we're looking for the applicant is, is the site plan package. That reflects the proposed and our more true to our condition.
Our more to to our condition. Um I I don't know, um regarding the ingress egress that's changing, um. There, I think, uh my understanding, there's still a necessity to get um. An act of stream through the municipal law, which is one of the this board is not able to drive the select.
Right, we're right, and we so we look at the site plan, the traffic flow patterns and things like that, but we don't have the authority. To take over public parking spaces. Um what's what what where does that stand, let's just cover that right now, is you guys, have you gone through a select board yet or?
So we have um had an attorney submit two separate easement agreements. To the town and. Last I knew they were under review with town council, working with our attorney.
Great.
And we were waiting to go in front of the select board to discuss. After we got a few months.
But this is no surprise to you what you're hearing tonight.
Not at all, right.
The the biggest thing with the easement agreement is um Megan was, we're heading that uh negotiation with their attorneys. Um that we've been just kind of trying to figure out, getting them through this modification before we start to kind of go back to.
Megan on your tater, just that's.
I know, right, just bring her back, um and so that's that's uh with the modifications to these now parking spots. We were like, well, why don't we put this whole conversation on hold and not, you know.
Okay, as long as everyone is aware of that, that's where we're headed, but it sounds like we're making progress, which is great.
And uh one more thing about Mr. Chair, um. Public Works uh is going to review the ingress egress as well, and they have, they send a note around that that will be next um. I think next week they said before they are are caught up or they will have a any comments on it. But they're aware of the project, I believe you've worked with.
Yes, they helped design this.
Yeah, so there's there's it's, yeah, they understand it.
Okay.
Well, we begin provides interior plan, so we can understand the circulation through the building to and from the. Parking and sidewalk. I'm a little confused, I don't want I don't want to answer now, I just. Think I'm asking for plans, but we're a little confused by the new thing saying. Perfect parking will now cut through the retail to get updated, I don't know.
I I had some questions about that, too, and that's exactly what I thought would be helpful to talk about next.
Can I, can I, can I explain?
No, I don't want explanation, I'm just saying that at some point we'll need to see plans that. Will show demonstrate that so it can be understood during the hearing process.
Um, do we have the original site plan? Itself that was approved? If if can we bring that up in a little in a little bit, can you just prepare to bring that up?
Sure, uh I think what you're asking for is more architectural drives, so correct.
And what I'm what I'm getting at, we'll we'll get to this, um I think what Bill's getting at is that that's like plan package included. Uh egress points into the building and then the certain the pedestrian circulation patterns of where the stairwells are and things like that. I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I I I'm assuming that's probably an easy thing to to look at.
I don't really care where the toilet is in the apartment.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, I I don't quite understand. Uh what you're actually looking for, are you looking for the site plan showing? How you get in and out of the building, or are you looking for the architectural plan inside the building?
So this is why I wanna bring up the original site plan that was approved, so we can look at that figure.
Yeah.
And then basically say maybe not be to this.
Do you mind chiming in, Chris?
Yes, go ahead now.
Um my, I was also gonna bring up the similar thing. Previously, the plan was for the ground floor. To be retail space and a parking lot. You know, an underbuilding parking lot, so I'm just curious with, you know, the underbuilding parking lot, presumably the retail is not moving underground. So I just wanted to see the shape of what that first floor is gonna look like, because. Yeah.
I agree, thank you, um and that's exactly what I thought would be helpful to talk about now. Um so may maybe maybe you might, maybe maybe you might be the best person to answer this, um. So we have. We're lowering parking. And before there was parking on the ground surface and then there was a residential block. So everything drops down five feet, so can you just talk us through how that matches? Because the retail shop isn't dropping down five feet, right? So you can just talk us through that and it'll match it up.
Can I, can I answer?
Whoever, it's fine, okay?
The retail will stay the same. You'll walk off the sidewalk and you'll walk into the retail space to be the very same as it is on the original plan. So that retail will not change. Then when you get beyond the retail. Get into the garage, the garage itself will drop. And it's the exact same as the building that has Nexus Dental. Down the street, that's the exact same as this, the retail is right off the street. And the parking in the back behind Nexus Dental is dropped out. This building will be the very same, same width, same size, same length, no difference.
Got it, and. The first floor above the garage will start at. Plus five feet, six feet, seven, seven feet, right?
Yes.
Um and so.
These garages are seven foot high ceilings.
Okay.
That's not it, yeah.
Right, so. So your retail will be at. And I think it might be helpful to see this at some point, the retail is gonna be at this level. And then behind it is the garage, and then are you having?
It's gonna be lower.
The garage will obviously be lower, of course. Yes, and then the first floor of the residential units will start.
Yes.
Higher than the first floor of the retail. Higher than first floor of the retail ground, or, okay.
You done. Good, the building on Main Street, did that also through special permit? And what's the address of that?
At the twenty Main Street.
We, um so I have another couple of questions about. Elevation. Um as if you can go to the. The page of this of your PDF, Mike, if you don't mind.
Okay, I can scroll back.
But I I think page five shows it best. One more question will be. Uh if you zoom in where the dumpster is located. Um yeah, if you zoom in where the dumpster located, yeah.
Wireless ones.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna see that.
Yeah, sorry about that, is that enough, or do you?
Uh, a little more, just maybe one more. Okay. Yeah, and can you just walk me through the elevations here? Um because we have a driveway going down.
Correct.
Um that is the dump, the dumpsters being shown there, are they at the bottom level?
Well, they are, because you would access the dumpster before you get to the bottom level. Uh they're about two to two and a half feet above the garage, so they are down the ramp, but they're not entirely down the ramp. Um that's actually gonna be a little more. Here for comfortable reading grades, it's a little.
That's better, yeah, okay, yeah, so.
If you're up here at the. Parking lot grade. You would come down to a grade where. The dumpsters are located, but you would continue past that another few feet. To get to the elevation of the um parking garage. So you would use the same ramp, but you would not get all the way to. Because. You'd be you'd be accessing. That. Dumpster at, it needs to be flat, so that's what it's showing here. There's a, there's a drop in grade and then it levels off, whereas you're going continuously. Down to the garage, and again, that's consistent with. Um some of the other sites um that the McDonald's have found.
Yeah, um do you have? The the original site plan that was approved available, can we look through that, please?
Sure. I'm gonna send it here on my laptop.
Can I, can I call on for anyone again? Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna take a five minute recess, um just uh. We're gonna need a five minute recess. Thank you.
I'll reopen the meeting. So Natalie and Jeff, we're gonna restart now, recess is over. Okay, so can we? Let's talk through. I think we have a good set of plans that were submitted. Let's just make sure that. We're going to be comprehensive. And we can give this team instructions, if there's another sheet. Or whatever we need. Can we look at the original decision?
Sure. Okay, so I'm gonna. Very difficult to see on this. Easier for my friend that.
Can you close up a participant? And then regarding the sort of pedestrian. Flow patterns. And the egresses to the building and how you can egress from the retail to the parking lot and. Both parking lots, did we have a figure in the original plan that showed those types of items?
So this isn't it. Is my understanding that this is all we have. That's what was appropriate.
Then. I'm not too interested in adding another sheet because I want to be consistent with what was provided previously. But I think we do still need to understand what the total pattern pedestrian pattern flows are around the place. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you want to go back. To or Julie, if you want me to try for a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna let you.
Can I point out this particular plan?
Well, if your new plan, sure. Because you didn't, you didn't.
Are you talking about like the one that we did with the Ron Moller did?
I think that's what you're talking about. The pedestrian plan. Just to show what your egresses and the active points are to the parking lot. So. I'm gonna go back to the sheet which shows the parking. And I will pause and zoom out a bit.
So again. Access to the parking lot or the garage remains as originally designed, if you will, it's just no circulation. Out. From the building. To the exterior parking because of the grade change.
I'm thinking about pedestrian walkways.
Okay. Okay, so starting with the easiest. Matters, there was no change from the edge of the parking towards the river. So anybody that is. At the rear or on the on the trail would then have the same walkway down to the promenade. And out to Main Street. That doesn't change. Same at grade entrance at the front of the building. So folks on the street or parking on the street or coming off the sidewalk would be the same entrance to this portion of the building. Which is which is the retail portion of the building.
That's all that door is only to the region.
Yes, that's correct.
It was before and it is now.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I think that I could have to know. There would be. Another entrance to the building at right here. This is per the original design.
That's also retail.
Which is right, which is retail, so it's it's an entrance from the parking area or the rear.
Yeah.
That did not change. What the door location shown this plan.
There's also another.
Have not changed, there's another at great entrance right here now before this would take you into the garage.
All right, let's stick with the retail.
So the two entrances to the retail would be here and here.
And the retail. It's this used to have an entrance into the. Area under the building.
Would have been into the parking lot, now it does not. I have not seen a floor plan that it would be a split condition. So. Because this is sunken and the floor above. Would be a few feet higher, there would need to be a split, which I think is.
It's changed so much, I can't really recall myself, but I don't think our last drawing showed. That you could walk from retail to the garage. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. But I don't think.
Oh, I just said we're good for trash and stuff.
No, that's the way it is on the Nexus building too. You 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 just walk into retail.
Can we go back to the original plan?
Unfortunately. It's again, plan I was trying to find the original media, so it's a little blurry.
And then there would be pedestrian, this drawing would be pedestrian access. To the garage and then to the floor.
Retail, retail. Access to the retail, looking through service access, the employee active. The visitor active and the handicap access.
All the access.
They all go in the front door.
Same as Nexus, which was approved on the original. Oh, I agree.
Do you mind zooming into the sort of backside of that retail space?
Sorry, it is a bit blurry in here.
Yeah, I guess. Maybe one more. I know it's gonna get blurry, but. I probably have a panther copy. And then all to the left, I know the back be driving, but. And then a little down, okay.
This is kind of the area.
That's the that's the same door, that's the same door. There's a same door there, and then I see there that. There's a door. That over there, right, that goes into the parking garage, and that's that's a change.
Left door is not there anymore.
There would need to be a set of stairs at the door, that same exterior door would be. This space would be not at grade.
So it would no longer be an accessible roof from the accessible.
There's accessible parking spaces within the parking garage, there were no accessible spaces on the surface.
Correct, but. The old design had an accessible roof into the retail from those stages, but.
We have the question about maybe a question about a split elevator entrance or something like that then.
So the point is, handicapped spaces. On the site would need to have access to the retail space somehow. And that's just ADA compliance. And the old drawings have that, but it's unclear what the new plans are because the handicapped spaces are only in the lower garage area.
Yes, and then the elevator would take them from the lower garage up to. Where they want to go.
And the the elevator enters into the retail space?
The elevator does not enter into the.
I think that's.
But they could take, there's going to be a ramp. The floor is going to be. Ramp to. Past the handicap like one inch. Per foot, so there will be a ramp leading from the difference in the grade on the elevator. So anyone can go in the garage, go on the elevator, go up. Get off the elevator and go on that. Ramp. For the handicap.
Where's the handicap ramp?
Right now, it's close to the elevator, right?
That's why I kind of want to see it.
Is that where we settled?
Way up there.
On your drawing, do you show the handicap ramp close to the elevator now?
We don't show any cap rap inside the building, we show the handicap spaces inside the building where they were before.
Okay, you just say that again.
Well, there's handicap, there's handicap spaces in the same location on our site plan. But I haven't seen the the drawing of the interior, so we don't have any connection to the retail from.
Well, the handicap spaces that we. Had before didn't change.
Other than the nearby people. Location wise, they're the same.
Right, so if the handicap person is in the garage. And he parks in the same spot that was approved before, he has an elevator to take him any place he wants like he did before. He might be three feet lower, that's the reason for the elevator.
He can definitely access, he or she can access the. The residential spaces. But I don't I don't see how someone parking in the handicap spot could access the retail. Space.
He goes up to the first floor on the elevator.
And that has access to retail space?
Right.
All of us, with that.
We have to have this all, it has to work because the building inspector has to approve it and it has to be handicapped.
Exactly, and they're not, it's not going to get approved if you have handicap spaces below.
Right.
But I think there was also, so we. If you don't mind, so I think there was also looking at talking about kind of the parking. In to separate now that they're very completely separated.
That's where I was gonna head next.
The handicap for. Residents and then handicap parking for retail access.
And I'm thinking another easy solution might be to have the handicap parking space. And I'm looking at this, I'm going to say parking space thirteen.
I'll reshare, sorry.
Yeah. And that, you know. Because that would allow. Handicap access more, you know, to the promenade.
Yeah.
Right, and so I think that may. Alleviate any sort of other sort of compliance concerns. Does that make sense? But I'm thinking I'm gonna ask for a parking, a handicap parking space. On say number thirteen, I think. Would be the best place to put it.
Are these assigned spaces?
No.
So the real. So retail people could park in the garage?
They could. It's not likely. Do you want them to though?
I don't want to get involved in parking.
Yeah.
Also the circulation, it tells me which driveway is open to.
Yeah.
In the parking lot, it gets a little confusing.
Yeah, so you know, like, for example, at ten Main Street. When I go to the Nexus, I park in the parking lot, I don't go under the garage.
Yeah, there's only one driveway to.
You're right, yeah, so that we would want to. Consider that. Potentially just allowing for retail to stay on service parking and and really. I think the reason we did it the way that was because the opposite comment came up during the planning board process. Having an accessible. Restriction. Of retail. But we don't care, if you guys want to make it for that, residents can only access the garage. We only had one driveway before.
I I I don't want to have anything to do with that. And I don't, I don't think it's up to me.
Parking lots.
The lines of space are not reserved.
They're not reserved.
Right. Right, so we would, we don't want reserved spaces because it could impact every sort of. Circulation and logistical thing.
I would only request that if we do put a handicap space in the surface parking that we make it van accessible. Pretty standard, and I just. Don't know if we can do that currently on that side, but can we take out some of that? This area.
That, then.
Right here. And modify it to be. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Because it's still, that was still previous neighbors, I think, the result, yeah, so changing that from the lawn, it would just allow you to have. Like a fully accessible space, and then your one van space isn't just in the in the garage.
Actually, the garage is not a van space, doesn't that be clear?
They have the eight foot.
Oh, I thought you said seven.
No.
The entrance is seven, yes.
Seven feet six. Oh, yeah, you're talking the width or eight.
I know, but you need eight foot two height for the van.
So then having it on surface parking would be a. So we can take.
And you're still talking about thirteen, right?
Yeah, yeah, so then the edge of pavement area.
Before the building was. Much taller than seven feet off the ground, right?
No.
Weird, didn't we have trucks and stuff going underneath?
No.
Alright.
All we have is, all we ever have is seven feet for the garage.
Those seven feet previously, but clear?
Yeah.
If the van space goes on the outside. Are there? Is it required to have a van space, it's not required to have a van space inside the garage, is there?
They just need one of them.
So we could take that van space. From the inside. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's one to. One to twenty-five, you need one van space and one. Normal at eight, eight foot wide.
So you have a non-van space on the inside and a van space on the outside. And you're compliant.
And you gain another.
Yeah. And if you happen, if you have to, and I don't know what the design is going to look like for the van space outside, if you have to lose a parking spot. I'm, I, van access is way more important than. Pick up and having a parking spot. It's a good trade.
I think if you guys are are okay with with a modification to that edge of pavement area. Then.
As long as you have an understanding of what that looks like, I'm just giving the parameters here. I'm not, I don't have my design hat on right now.
I, yeah.
I just want a van space on the outside, and if we have to lose some other things, that's.
Because the the vans, van spaces, you need access on the driver's side. So they wouldn't be able to take. Number twelve. And well, so they can make number twelve the van safe and then the the drive access would be number thirteen. Or they could just move it all down, so.
Whatever, whatever.
We shifted down.
And I know, I know, I can see that the bottom of this parking lot kind of tweaks in, so good health, turning radius, you know, all that.
It made for a passenger vehicle, so we would need to push it to space twelve.
Yeah, so what are we gonna do? Yep, alright, so we've. That this was a good discussion, let's continue on with park parking and traffic flows. Board members, do you have any other comments on parking and traffic flow patterns here? And Natalie and Jeff, feel free to chime in too.
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead, sure.
I have one quick comment about the thing you were just discussing, I know we've we've moved on, but the edge of pavement lawn area. If that does shift down, just something to keep in mind, I believe that that is the snow storage area for the out, you know, the surface parking. So just something to keep in mind, you know. To keep an eye on not not making that go away completely, that's all.
They are not allowed to snow, snow storage, they are not allowed to store snow on this thing, so that was a. Mistake by the plans that we look at there.
Okay.
Cross down role, actually DP made that decision. Yeah, blind DB.
Okay. Jeff, did you have some comments on the traffic flow patterns?
Yes, sort of to continue on with the the van outside versus van inside space discussion, yeah. I don't know to what degree these would be considered separate lots. On the same site because of, you know, how you access them or how they're interconnected or anything like that, that may be a question for a. Code consultant, but if they are considered separate lots, you'd need a van space on on each, I think, and then. I think as Bill was alluding to, I think you need eight foot something for a van. Clearance if it was to be inside, but. Just something to consider, I guess, as you're looking at ADA compliance.
If they are considered by code, it'd be a separate lot, and the number of handicap spaces changes. It would be calculated for a lot.
Because that would basically give you one, one ADA space needed per lot, right, and then I think at a minimum one space. One ADA space needs to be a van, so you may be looking at two van spaces. Or ones that could service a van, they may not need to be signed and marked as van spaces, but. Just, you know, something to consider, I guess.
Thank you, Jeff, any other thoughts or comments for traffic flow patterns?
Yeah, I guess I I noticed the, and stop me if I'm getting ahead of myself here, but the. The entrance to the garage. Appears to be only like seventeen feet wide. For two-way access, you know, that's just. That seems a little tight, and I don't know. Where other spots for the dumpster have been considered in the revised site plan, but I'm looking at like the wall heights and I guess how that. Dumpster area would sort of be serviced, I'm guessing a truck would need to pull straight in and then back straight out. It looks like the wall sort of next to that. The dumpster, it looks like it's about. What, an eight foot, or sorry, six foot, seven foot wall, something like that, so. I guess from a, you know. I don't know how high a driver sits up in a garbage truck, but I guess one thing to consider is they'd be coming down quite a steep slope to service that thing to begin with. And then as they back up. You know, you may sort of be backing up blindly into the parking lot until a point where you're. You can see, you know. The garbage driver could see. Back into the lot above that wall. So I was just kind of curious if there was. Other spots, I mean, it's nice that it's tucked down and seemingly out of the way, I guess, in terms of creating a. A pinch point for access in and out of the garage and just, you know. Backing up into the lot. Blindly, in a way. So any of, there was other areas sort of considered maybe for the dumpster. That may be a little easier to service.
I I think we will need something that will show us that the truck will not be backing blindly because. If the nose of the truck is down and he's backing out. His mirrors aren't going to work, he won't be able to see what's behind him. For a little bit. Whereas the old plan, he was level. So he could see, so. I don't really want to have a flagman required every time there's a trash truck here, but. I think we need to see something that shows us that. It's not a hazard to have the. Trash truck backing into the public parking lot.
May I make a suggestion as well? I also noticed that there is. Gas service and the meters, is that behind the dumpster on the side of the retaining wall or?
Yeah, we show behind the dumpster, that can actually be relocated to the, to the other side.
My concern is that the dumpster.
Right, so that's something, and that was an oversight on my part, we had them there with that grade. After discussion.
It looked like there's a retaining wall there, and I'm thinking maybe he has them on the retaining wall, but it feels right behind the.
No, it is, and it, right, so if they can be relocated to the upper part, which would actually shorten. In the lawn area, so it still wouldn't seem to be.
You know, you never know, the dumpsters are swinging.
I agree.
Well, also it's in a shed, it's not, the dumpster doesn't sit by, we we enclose them in a shed. So there's no way like the dumpster is gonna.
Yeah. The gas company won't approve. Gas company won't allow it, so.
Yeah, well, no, but I just wanted you to know, there are all of our dumpsters.
They would be protected.
No, it's it's about safety, not about.
We're gonna blame Mike for this one.
Should have relocated them.
Okay.
Alright, let's take these comments one at a time, um. Uh, regarding the the one or two lot. Convention, uh, I don't. It who who makes that determination, cause I don't think the planning board has the authority to determine whether this is a one lot or a two lot scenario.
No, I think it's like, it's a. Basically, I mean, there's ADA definitions, right? I don't know if mass AAB is any different than ADA, but that's, it's really like a. Code consulting call, I would think, if it gets really down into. Definitions like that. In in my mind, they they would, you know, I get that you could probably get from an elevator in the basement up to another lot, but to me. At at Facebook, they seem like they're two different lots, they're accessed by two different driveways and you know, you can't really. Walk freely between the two, so. You know, it. I don't know if that's something an architect would weigh in on, or if you would need some sort of building. I I read all the sort of building code, but. Code consultants make those kind of calls.
And it it, yeah, so it's not the planning board, I I just don't know.
Think we need to do more research and.
Yeah, I would say it's the architect that's gonna determine that, he's got the rules and.
Yeah, it's tough with our, I mean. This is a hard one, cause it's got residential in there too. Residential has its own quadrant interpretations, so. Then you really want a code consultant, you want a co-grad or somebody to. Take a look at it. And it should be a pretty simple answer for them and. Then we're, don't have to talk about it anymore.
Exactly. I mean, it it's a code compliance item, I. I I just wanna, you know, I want to locate on the site plan handicap spaces. Um. I I don't wanna get into codes too much though, cause it's not, not, code's not my just ditch, no, so, in this case. But I also wanna make sure that you guys are lined up for success and not have something that's shown that's not correct, so.
Right.
Um, let's let's go with that, we don't know, and that we just need some, we need like we talked about handicap inside and handicap outside. Um, regarding the the driveway entrances, I I agree seventeen feet is is narrow, um, is. Is I assume Mike, there's just sort of psych and strength here that.
Though I was taking straight out their original architectural drawings, so I didn't create that with um, that's a. But it obviously would affect the parking space depth inside the building, well, that's not true, because there's a twenty-four foot aisle interior. Um, so it's really a question for the architect.
I don't think if I have any building that has a wider. Uh, entrance to the garage and six. I'm almost sure any. Entrance is just sixteen feet, fit, actually less than sixteen, cause it's steel being fit, so it's like fifteen, eight or something.
I recall we had this exact same topic conversation with the original approval, though, it'd be interesting to see what was originally approved.
Well, you said you took it off the architecture.
Yeah, the floor plans. The floor plans came straight from the original drawings that were part of the set that these folks gave me, that were the approved drawings, which. Julia had a related elevation.
Oh, you can't see this. Sorry. You know, when you share.
I did get revised architectures over the course of a year, but.
So in this plan. I cannot read the width. There. That's originally approved.
It's easy to check, Dylan, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's the same as before, okay.
Yeah.
Um, that was under.
Regarding the 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 dumpster pickup and the. Sort of um engagement, and you understand the concern.
Yeah, right, we checked, we, yeah, we had a conversation about that, I actually looked at. Three of the sites they have, they have one that's steeper than this, um. We look, we accept, we analyzed it for the not hitting the walls, so we did a turning template. To confirm that you can get a truck in and out without crapping into the walls, I understand the other comment being. If I'm in the truck and I look out my mirror, what am I seeing behind it? Am I actually seeing the top of the slope? Well, or am I, am I even seeing the parking lot, right, right?
Is there those round mirrors that they have? Does that work for them? You know, they have a mirror that for all around.
A mirror into a mirror, no.
They don't work.
It's not allowed, really, I don't think it's allowed to use a mirror into a mirror. But uh. It 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 may be fine, I just, no, we, I don't think we want, we just wanna make sure there's not like. Some type of weird safety issue here. But Mike, you get the concern?
I do, I understand, and this says twenty, so we've gotten revised floor plan from the architect. We can bump that opening to high twenty if it still fits the parking space.
So your 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 permit. It either the the plans that were. The special permit, um. The last special permit approved.
You, so your thought is like, eight twenties is probably doable?
Well, I wanna look at it compared to our layout, but we held the same dimension, so the. Final foundation plan I was provided, most of the head seventeen, cause that's what I put on our plan.
Um, cause I'm curious, we just take a look at. Their one on Main Street that was approved, and what was the? The width on that? Be a slope. Well, do you know what the width is um intending to?
I'd say they're all sixteen feet.
Okay.
It's not a compliance point, it's more of a. Logistic plan, and there's something to consider.
Looks like it's.
Before they had option of coming out the side, now they have to drive.
There was a ramp out at the side.
Just to say, the building that she's pulling up right now, Main Street, the bikers go down the ramp.
And biking, biking inside?
It's this, yeah, there's bike racks inside, same spot that this is shown on the plan. And they go down, the the amounts that these are actually used throughout the day is. Well, yeah, and there's also retail, like. Julia said she goes to that dentist and she doesn't go in her garage, so. It's just.
I didn't know, good.
You can, it's just a long walk.
I wouldn't even think to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any um, any other comments on traffic flow pattern?
I, I think it's something to keep in mind that if you would like them to. Remove or relocate the dumpster, um. I would not want any more pervious surface to go down, so I would want them to take more parking to do that. Um, so kinda keep that, keep that in mind, um, they did gain some parking in the in underneath. The building. The net parking went up.
No, the net parking.
Yeah, I I get it, yeah. So.
See, I have issues with losing more parking, because this request here is taking up really public parking spaces. In a lot that. Sometimes fills now and will be filling more often once the. Adjacent buildings are leased out. And. Take parking away from the site would then force some of those brokers into the public lot as well, so not only would it lose spaces in the public lot, it would increase. Activity in the public lot, so. I got a little problem with that.
And I think this is where, you know, the, that's why I wanted to have these these two public hearings simultaneously to ensure that that um. You know, cause conservation, we're not gonna let more. Um, impervious be uh be placed.
And sorry for going a little off topic, but the the impervious calculation, is that impervious on site? Or impervious affected by the project, including the stuff in the public right away? Cause it looks like we're blown away. Ryan, so a fair amount of pervious public space, that was a combination of the. Um. New spaces that are. The the. There's no increase in payment in the parking area. Other than that little connector between the town's lot and the new lot, so there is a net increase overall of the affected area. It's just it's moved around, it shifted around, more of it's against the building. There was previously no, where where it says lawn, there's no green space there previously, so that's all the gain. And the 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 net losses where it's, where the twenty-four foot aisle is, that's the, that's the loss. I'll point at the screen. This is the revised plan has more total pavement than the old one.
The, this plan has less pavement, the revised plan has less pavement, yes, it does, and and that's what I'm saying, yeah, this is, yeah, I'm sorry, this is the, this is the net. Increase in the town, but what you're seeing is you see a gain here, you actually see a little bit of a gain here. There's effectively no change elsewhere.
Um, well, it's base three and four used to be.
But there was parking here previously, and this was all, this was all paved before as well, it's it's a few hundred square feet, it's negligible, right, it's it is an increase, so. We provided the updated stormwater important, we ran the calculations, so. And that does include the tree wells and everything that were in the um. Promenade, but not the promenade. Deck, if you will, so. You know, that's the top forest.
Okay. Circulation, can we get clarification on those two side doors into the. Through the left side of uh. Ground.
Yeah, right, I sure, stop sharing.
So, I don't know what they are. Right, so this is something that's gotta be sorted out by the architectural, but. The door that's on the midway down would now be a door, not to the garage, but to the. First residential, so you can't see it in this view, but. Well, um.
No, sorry.
So that would be, that would be a set of steps that take you up to the upper level, so that that lower level would would be a stairwell, that would be. So that's an entrance to the um first residential floor, the other door, you come back down. The door next to the nineteen point second will bring you into the retail, the other one will bring you into that, again, there'd need to be a set of steps. Um, to bring you up into the. Um, second floor or the first floor, the first residential floor, because there's gonna be a split.
Okay, so there's all stairs, but I guess there would be some stairs internally.
But again, that's to be detailed on them. Then you have thoughts on traffic flow patterns? Parking?
There's gonna be a different signage. In the public parking lot?
You mean, what type of signage?
Um, to direct angle. To your parking for the review.
So that will be. If it's on the public way, this left board will be reviewing that, um. They'll have to cover it.
I'm not really sure they're capable of that, they don't really have the attention span to that. So can we set it up for them, so it's clear, thanks?
So they will be having engineering review the plan to ensure that it works, and so Wayne will be reviewing that plan. As town engineer.
Oh, I I agree, but. If there's gonna be a request for special signage, I just wanna make things clear enough. Presented in the plans so that it can be identified and discussed, I'm I'm not clear what that is. Well, I have a feeling if you're going to. You know, Joe's retail spot. Somebody wants a sign at one of those driveways saying, turn here to park.
And like, are you saying like an advertising sign?
I don't know, probably a directional sign, I don't know, it just seems like you're gonna need something, cause otherwise.
I think what you're getting at is if you're in that back parking lot and you wanna go to Joe's Pizza. Swing to the right, going that. On the ground level, not driving in.
I think so, yeah. And that just saves somebody from.
Yeah.
Going down or whatever, the back out and certain way to work on again, and to save.
In one sign, one sign that's probably needed, um, is a note, like a note through or something like that.
Don't think we're dead end.
No, 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 no. High rent district.
Yeah, so as long as it's clear, but whatever's going in the right of ways is fully identified.
Alright, um, I I do wanna talk landscaping, um, can we, can you just, Mike, can you quickly cover what's these? Stormwater changes are, just for the public public record here?
Sure.
Um, we say that they're very diminished, but I just want the. You know, I'm gonna just show on public record that they are diminished as we said. Um, and then we can talk landscaping, is there another item we should talk about?
I think at this moment, um, there's there's some stuff that they have to come back with, some plans, so I would say that. I don't think it would be productive to go any any further without updated, updated plan.
Um, is is there an intention to provide updated architectural plans on this?
If you if you require that, I'm not so sure. I don't think you you uh. Scope of your work doesn't go inside the building, then uh, that's why we don't.
The time he's needing, so.
What's the best way to handle that?
I think that we we've talked about a few different items, such as the handicap spaces that need to be, so. There's there's all of the different items that that we discussed, um, you know, the few. Figuring out the width of the going in into the garage, um. So those, you know, you you can come back with with revised plans, um, and the goal is that you'll. I don't want you to decide anything without the the plan saying, yeah, these are the exact ones, um.
Alright, we might, there might need to be some interior plans, cause I still don't quite understand. How you get to a stove because of the affordable housing. As handicap unit. I believe, so there would need to be the ability to provide handicap parking for that unit, so that. That stuff would need to be.
You can access that elevator from the garage.
Where the garage cannot handle a handicapped man.
So I think with all these questions. I would rather be able to just see what the applicant and the.
So if we put the handing, the van parking outside like we have in all our other buildings. We don't have van parking in the garage on any of our buildings. So if we put the van parking outside. Why would that not work for handicap for any unit?
I don't know, but it it. Involve several stages of approval, cause it's affordable housing, so it has to go to housing trust, it has to go to. Whatever the you call now, and so I'm just saying. Figure it out now instead of finding out it's a problem later.
Bill's saying you might get pinched by these other eight, other entities, yeah. Um, and that, you know, working it out ahead of time and making sure it's compliant, I think would be helpful. Okay, it may not be, we may not care as planning board members, but.
Someone else will.
Someone else might, so just, just adds up. Someone else might, so just just adds up.
Okay, so. Go for drainage, yeah, um I had that colored. Light up earlier, it might be confusing, but um the. The the drainage network, that's the grading plan, let me go back to the utilities, which. That went wrong away, um the. The plan that was before the conservation commission, which which has been approved, and I discussed earlier uh. Has an infiltration system outside the the building, the reason it's kind of. Um dog-eared or shaped this way is to keep it fifty feet from wherever, uh it collects. And will infiltrate runoff from the promenade, so the grading scheme is that. Needs to mimic the existing conditions, so not to lose flood storage. Um that was one of the remaining questions previously, so. We designed the site and with the structural engineer, the height of retaining wall, location of the retaining wall. Um and the grades in the parking lot, not to uh impact flood storage, there's a nominal increase in flood storage. As a result of the new design, everything slopes down in this direction to a low point here on the promenade. Which is in part why the wall historically has sort of failed, because everything runs off over the top of the wall. So in effort to not continue that, uh there's a shallow drain here. Against the promenade, there's also a trench drain, and this again comes off the original approved design, a trench drain that would collect runoff from the surface of the parking lot. Anything that makes it past that, get to this small drain, both of those are connected to a water quality unit. Which is then in turn connected to this infiltration system, the roof drains would then connect to the infiltration system. And the rear of the site, as I mentioned, because there's a sloping. Ramp into the parking lot or the subterranean garage, if you will. At the flood elevation, uh one sixty, we have a drain. That then connects to a water quality unit, everything below that, because we don't, obviously we can't get by gravity. Out to the river once we're below a certain elevation, and we didn't wanna put. An open drain connected in essence to the river below flood elevation, um we have a drain at the bottom. Which would then be connected to a pump chamber similar to what is done in the other buildings, and that would be discharged into the same. Um water ball unit, that would also be connected to the infiltration system. When the infiltration system is overtaxed, uh it would overflow to a manhole, which has a. Gate uh lap valve in it, um beyond that, there's a uh gate valve, this is. This portion of the system would then connect to the existing drainage system that has a stabilized discharge point at the river. Um this was discussed in primitive with the uh the DPW. Um the purpose of this valve is that if there ever needed to be a shot off or maintenance, or in the case where there was significant flooding in the river. This valve could be closed, so it's not the flood the system um for a period of time. So the only change is that this drain or catch basin used to serve the parking that was on. The driveway into the building, um and it's no longer necessary for that purpose, but because we are going to be discharging some pavement. From these two drains, we left the water quality unit, everything downstream of that. Out to the river, everything to the uh west is the same, um and as before, the sewer would go out the front of the building. Um we showed the new manhole, this design was worked out with DPW, the water services were worked out with DPW. Um we've already discussed relocating the bank, what I was suggesting was perhaps the gaps could end up in this location. Um that that the. And at great parking lot elevation are slightly higher, um so that covers the utilities.
Any questions from the board on stormwater? Um is Mike, all we, is it your purview to discuss the landscape plan, or would that be you guys? Who who should, I just wanna talk through this.
So this was the approved plan, between the two of us, we'll try to answer, uh this was the approved plan. Again, the landscaping on the promenade and then some, like a small row shrubs here, this is the revised plan. So nothing has changed in this direction with the exception that this. Uh barrier would need to be extended from where it ended to the end.
It's just the northern part of the site that has some minor changes to it.
It would be along the promenade, this this barrier would need to be continued at the head end, other than that, again, no change on this side of the. The site, so that leaves lawn area and lawn area here, uh and it would be this retaining wall would have coping or a above grade component so that. Um it could be landscaped against, um.
Have you, have you been informed, or have you, have you talked to the tree warden, uh DPW about tree selection at all?
The trees that are on the plan were already approved, there's nothing new other than lawn. Square footage.
On a on a um town property where there's trees or lawn and the other thing?
Well, there was, this shows no, no change.
Yeah, but.
There was, there's a tree here being removed from the driveway. If there was no grading here, I don't know if there would have been any other tree removal. It would need to be grading in this location for.
Well, there's a driveway.
There's the driveway here.
Oh, yeah.
I forget about the treatment of that one.
On the landscape plan, I mean, so. I would like a little uh uh more time to review with the applicant and go over some of these details.
Looks like there'd be one more tree removed with this plan than with the prior plan, because this tree would be lost, this tree would have been lost originally. This tree would have been lost, would be lost with this plan, this area needs to be graded differently.
Um and so that's so my my large comment, my only comment on the landscape plan, and I think would be helpful to. Work more through, um is that I just see a lot of green, and I'd like to see, so I'm seeing a tree that's being removed, I think that should be replaced. Um but I would like to see, you know, maybe some shrubs, um but if there's room for other trees, I think that would be beneficial. And that 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 aligns with sort of master plan and town sort of goals, so if there's ability to put more more trees there, I think that's great. Um.
Even if they're on town property, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm seeing a lot of green right now, and I just, that's a lot of great opportunity here to to do that. Um and trees benefit sites, as you know, so, um ones that maintenance, so if it helps you guys, I don't like lawn. Um I'm sure there's better up, okay, you guys don't want lawn, okay, all right, yeah, so let's get rid of lawn, if there's better way, better ways to do this, then yeah, let's do it.
So and and I think that's where, you know, collaborating with with conservation and planning is gonna be key, but unfortunately, we just haven't had time to to really discuss. Um discuss this land, so if we, you could allow us to to go to work with the applicant and then bring you a a different design.
Yeah, and then, you know, I think the promenade's great, I don't wanna talk about the promenade, and it's just the green, you know, the the grassy area.
Related to the landscape, the um. The driveway into the surface lot, are those curves extending into the parking lot? And if so, do they need to be?
So we have this, this side is not. These are walls.
The wall.
Oh, cause it's great.
Cause it's a drop.
This drops, this drops roughly three feet.
The walls, so have the widths of the parking spaces in the public block been adjusted for the wall obstruction?
They are the same nine foot space.
Well, they're not adjusted, our code requires extra width while we have the structures.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, we accommodated that originally over here at the Gargoyle. We have a little space, that's right, this side over here, there's a little bit of green space. Um that we can shift, we can add some, this space can be added to this side, we would have to push this out a little farther. So we shift around green space. Um so there would be a nominal increase in pavement here, if you will, on this one. This one, I think we have room, this is four or five feet, this is, I think, four feet here, so we could pick, we can distribute that between.
On about on the public parking side, let's.
This is, uh it's good, well, so.
Uh yes.
The radiator, sorry. So this drops from around elevation sixty-three, eight-ish down to about sixty-one, so that's about a. Two and a half to three foot drop from here to here, so this, this would be, if there was a. It'd be a foot coping or something, there needs to be something there to prevent someone from driving off of this, onto this ramp that's dropping away.
And if you're parking in those parking spaces on the public side, you are, what would, what about with the? Yeah, so where your cursors? Or what? Yeah, yeah, right there, yeah, yeah, so if you're parking there, what would that wall like be for the parking spare?
Well, so we have a couple of law, uh sixty-five, so we're showing it two feet above.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, the wall is sixty-five and chain.
Grade is sixty-three, almost sixty-four, so sorry, got it. Uh the door would, it would, it would be, if you're talking about worrying about the door swinging, there would be an issue there. To to lower that, that puts trip hazard or there's a fall height. From this space down to the space that avoids of a guard of some sort. But rather than just on a six inch, or we have a higher, and either way, you're gonna have a barrier there. So what we'll look to do is spread this out on each side, we'll have to look at this side more carefully. Uh but I don't want, what we didn't wanna do is narrow this opening up because of the truck, but we can take a look at that. If if this could be shifted, it did work, we originally thought about just emphasize that this is. Into the building rather than this arcing back out, we originally kept this. You, if you will.
Well, everyone should be taking the right.
Correct, and and that's the other reason, but when we looked at the truck, it just made it easier to leave down, yeah.
So it's different than currently approved, but.
No, this is the same, what we were doing was looking to bring this back and tighten it up.
Oh.
Because we were adding this, but we didn't, we couldn't get another parking space, never mind the concern about. Um having a little extra room by this wall and the this wall, this is not a wall over here, but this is a wall.
And and these walls we're talking about are going to get reviewed by town engineer. And leave as well, they would have to be reviewed because they're on public property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all they give you anyway. Great. Um going back to landscape plan, I guess when I'm the only comment is what we talked about, get rid of that, and see if we can, you know. Oh, and um for trees, I like, I like planting trees that are uh native, of course, but definitely climate resistant. I don't like planting native trees that don't last. What uh what else should be, what would, what else would be helpful to cover tonight, maybe we're going to continue to do.
Don't think we can see so many. What, losing five feet looks.
It's probably perfectly fine, and then for the public record, I think it'd be helpful, just even some sketch that shows. You know, floor elevations and other kinda, cause it sounds like a mismatch a little bit, they're like a split level, right? So something simple. Just just to show for public record, it doesn't need to be part of the design package, the drawn package, but it's the thing to draw.
We can split that out, so we can do like, you know, your your approved plans that get stamped, and then there's like seven until drying, but you guys are using. The those can be.
Yeah, exactly.
If if they won't be tied to your stuff.
And I'm not asking like, am I to create a whole new sheets, you know, that I know that costs money and all that, so that's not what we're asking for. But just so that the board and members of the public can understand. Sorry, I'm taking away the.
And kind of no thing on the. Right away on the main street side, nothing at all is affected there, should be totally aware, isn't the the crosswalks and the other. Uh that and sidewalk replacement, then have our trees, then have our light bulbs and and. Silage that is required, actually shown.
Okay, I will, um I will open this up for public comments, um if there's members online, which I don't think there are. Um there's no members online, public comment, is there any public comment in here tonight? Okay, um I think, I think we have good direction. Okay. Um if you need additional clarification, please reach out and I'm here to help. Provided, but if you have on what I heard today. Good. Nothing, well, not some bill.
Do we, do we wanna go, um you're you're, what's practical for, uh anyways, for your revised plans to be done?
The next meeting is July eleven.
Eleven is pretty quick, fifteen, I know, twenty ten.
Well, of course, we want day elevens.
I'm looking at Mike.
The review schedule from the engineering.
He, why anyway? Yeah, he he, that's what I was gonna say, is that that, you know, DPW had said, I sent the note around, um.
But those are, so he was talking about his separate, he has to reapprove all of the plans under their DPW.
With the holiday next week, um. I don't think the eleven is is a good choice, I think the twenty-fifth, sorry guys, I think the twenty-fifth is the right choice.
We'll turn the plans around as quickly as we can.
Right, obviously, but yeah, they'll be, I'll be out two days next week and Friday, so you're. That's one, we don't have heavy lifting here, but we do have a few questions to.
It will be on confirmation on the eleventh.
Right.
But we start at six P M on Tuesdays now, so um I planned it, so.
Is the expectation, expectation for twenty-fifth, a lot of all the plans in the staff review of all the plans?
That's why I'm saying the twenty-fifth, so that it has time to. Be one to one more review, right, I think, to me, that's a, I I prefer that. Um so that there's enough time to get get through everything's done. To get to completion. Does that make sense? So if you guys don't agree that, I would prefer the twenty-fifth. All right, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until the July twenty-fifth meeting, can I have a second?
Uh you have to include the time you're gonna have the meeting.
Oh, um sorry, just at seven P M, the meeting starts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, um okay, all in favor by vote call, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And that.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
We lost the uh microphone in the room.
Okay, Jeff, can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay, really good to speak up, I guess. Okay, um right, um yeah, so basically with the A and R, what we're looking for, as I said, just. There's uh three general requirements, um we wanna make sure that the plan uh proposes that the. Creative blocks will both run on a accepted way, uh which in this case is on Elmwood. Um we need a determination of vital access, um the it's suitable for emergency services. Um and the third is that the frontage requirements are adequate, in this case, this is in the general uh residence district. Um there's um, I think, if you can all read it small, but uh the dimensional requirements are all um. Uh conforming with the uh with the zoning uh district, and um in this case, if the board feels. That the the standards met, uh you're, what you would be doing is take, making a determination. That the plan does not constitute a subdivision and is entitled to the A and R endorsement.
We don't have an official staff report on this, but what is the staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is approved. Well.
Yeah, the approval is not required, right, yeah. Um. Is, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, no, none for us.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Natalie, any questions or comments?
None for me.
Yes.
No, none, yes.
Okay. Uh, what's the motion here, Bill?
Uh, the, the action you just said, um.
Wait, you, you don't motion anything.
I do not, it's like, you have to like declare the three things are met, and then plus it twice or something like that.
You wanna read it, I, I've read it for you.
I have it.
Yes, please. I thought you guys, hold on, okay, the, the, you, you're, you're gonna, um. Make a determination that the plan does not constitute a subdivision. And that it is entitled to the A and R endorsement based on the previous criteria I mentioned.
That's it. Oh, there's three, no, there are.
Well, the. Here, you can read them off of this, just.
Thank you, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that the subject property at twenty-seven Elmwood Street. Division N is entitled to an A and R chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L, that the lot depict, depicted, uh, meets the minimum frontage required. Departments in the meeting zoning bylaws, and, and that the planning board has determined that vital access. Uh, meaning emergency services and, and others exist to such lot, to, to the lot in question as required by chapter forty-one, section eighty-one M. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, uh, all in favor by roll call, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And that.
Yes.
Jim, yes, Natalie?
Yes.
So that's five zero in favor of the roll.
Thank you.
Uh, is it all right if I use your stamp on these, or you don't prefer to sign, but. Stamp's good.
There you are.
Yeah, okay, Stan, are you okay with a stamp, David?
Yes.
Well, yeah, thanks for coming in.
Jim, I have it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Uh, if you hang a minute, I'll have one of these ready to take with you.
Okay, good.
Um, any, later updates?
No, uh, no, I didn't have the time to prepare, um, today, since, um. No, we don't have anything except the town hall will be closed Monday.
And, and why, interesting, right, or, yeah, Monday Tuesday, yeah.
Okay.
Great. Um. Is it time to, what do you mean?
I think it will be, okay, well, can I?
Yeah.
Or just so good, you mentioned earlier, um. I think it, and the application is coming for it in there, so. I'll take the app, it's virtual, I mean, it may be. An issue with, you know, people helping, that might be virtual, but the primary presenter really needs to be.
It helps.
Well, I, 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 I think, I think, I think that would be a good general rule, there may be exceptions that we could clear ahead of time or something, something happened, but.
Certainly.
Did we have something, huh, I think tonight, oh, we had this, this high school, you know, right?
They need a doctor's note.
Yeah, we need a doctor's note. But otherwise, they have to be at risk, you know, if there's initial problem, if it takes more than a minute, then. They're done till the night, and they have to reschedule.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I.
For them, it really needs to be in the room, it's not fair to. Anybody.
Is that what, that was the board wants, I'll do it.
Yeah, let's talk more, but I think that's a good general.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it basically that risk, potentially.
No offense.
Yeah. Um, I want, you know, I wanna help all applicants, but, you know, you know, you get it, so.
Yeah.
But this is not the first time.
Only reason all this board has been more than fair with that sort of, of flexibility.
I see, so.
Well, yeah, there's, no, no question there.
Jim?
I am ready, are you, are you ready now?
Yes, sir.
Bill, are you ready?
Sure, sure.
I can, I can take the long guy.
I know.
Uh, Mr. Sherman, I would, uh, uh, make a motion that we close the meeting of this evening, uh. And I wish you all happy, positive life.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'll second it, all in favor by roll call, Bill?
Yes.
And that.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And yes, that's five zero to close the meeting for tonight, thank you.
Everybody, yeah, thank you for joining, thanks for your first meeting.
And you can bring it with you and save yourself a trip.
We're good. Oh, sure.
Well, I'll stand here. Hey, can you stand around, like, a minute? Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, everyone. See you in a couple weeks.
Yeah.